I'm calling up the city council board. We are in the work session this morning. We've been called to the matter of hard to regard that state law. Our focus this morning is redistricting. Council just so. So I want to go through the order of worship here. Stay with me for a minute. We're going to start with item one, which is to hear a, excuse me. We're going to start with item 1-1, which is to hear the presentation by legal counsel of the draft, illustrated plan, the district, the city councilman, the district based upon the 20 and 20 census staff. That would be, that's the information that we saw late last week. And I know that there have been some suggestions by counsel as to other plans. Right now, we're going to stick on this original plan. And I would like you to, I would like to suggest that you keep your interaction with these folks at the state office of questions, not to comments. Following that presentation, we will have citizen comments. Following citizen comments, we'll go into executive session. And then we will come back for discussion and maybe use part of this drawing exercise. Okay? Everybody clear on that? All right. So I'd like to go to item 1-1 and ask the board to make any opening comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have the panel with us today, Mr. Mendez, with State Office of Commerce and Justice, and this is going to be a quick call, so I'll be here every day.
Good morning, Mr. Mendez. Good morning, counsel. Mayor. Folks, what I'd like to do is go back to our initial assessment that we discussed briefly at our last meeting, explain what the imbalance is among the districts in a census standpoint, and explain what our mission is today. And then I'll kind of, I circulated a very preliminary draft of a solution. I had the imbalance, which based on some generalized comments I got from the board. I know we have received additional comments out of both groups a little later in the meeting as we was going through, but I want to lay this out for the public comment and then have it up here physically to all on some of the legal issues about that before we get into the drawing. So if we can have Josh be allowed to put up the initial assessment chart on the screen. And so, but this is, and we recall this from our meeting last session. When I reported to you the results of the 20 census, it showed that the council districts are out of balance by 46.1 percent. The way this imbalance is figured is between the most populous and least populous districts. So District number five had grown at the fastest pace in the city, and as a result, with 56,000 people in it, is the most populous, basically by 31, it's 31 percent over the ideal size, 71.69 percent. So if each, if the population level is 257,000 or 285, and each of the districts must have about 42,914 to be ideal size, precinct five had to shed some population from the 56,000 population level now in order to come toward a deal. And at the least populous district was number two, and it's down by 14 percent. So that, it needs to add a bunch of population to come back up to the ideal, and that's those 14,000, I mean, that 14 percent is what we're trying to make up there. So precincts one, two, and three, or districts one, two, and three really all have substantial deviations. Precinct number five, six is pretty near the ideal, would need minor modification. But the real exercise that we're going to go through in trying to solve the imbalance is to get population out of districts three and four into one-two, I mean, precincts four, five into one-two. And so I had collected some basic comments from the council members in the written question here, items submitted, some legal questions I had pertaining to the criteria. And based on that, I took an initial staff at trying to solve the problem. I did it purely from a legalistic standpoint. There are lots of criteria. As you know, we adopted the traditional districting criteria, but because as a legal counsel, you had urged me to figure out if there were any legal issues, I wanted to focus on the voting rights issues, both under the Constitution and under the Voting Rights Act. So Josh, if we can pull this chart down, and what I wanted to do, this is a map that I circulated to you guys, to the council with your lawyers, as an initial draft. And I just did it for discussion purposes, and it attempted to solve for the imbalance. And I'll put the map back up in a minute, because the important thing that I was trying to solve for, if you go to the total population chart, I was trying to get the total overall deviation to be less than 10 percent. I just, and you can see, I solved to 9.66. So I didn't try to get every district to perfect ideal size. I just tried to bring it within the legal limit. The presumption of course is that a district that's 10.10 percent is valid, and so that's the basic approach I took. And the reason I did that was it allows for us to solve for some particular problems. And I'm going to go be sitting back and forth here a little bit to focus you on the problem. So Josh, if you will pull up the initial assessment chart just for a second, if you can pull up, in district number one, it has a 56.1 percent Hispanic population and a 9.25 percent Hispanic population. If you flip back to the other chart, you'll see that this one, in adding population to district one, I actually ended up dropping, I could keep the Hispanic population at exactly the same level, it went down to 54.59 and 8.9 on African-American population. Still a majority minority district as a whole, but I had to, a little bit of reduction, if you will, in those percentages. Likewise, if we're looking at district two here, and you can see that this is the one that traditionally has elected African-American member of council over the last couple decades, and it is under this plan at 20.35 percent African-American and 47.90 percent Hispanic, with a 27 percent Anglo population in it. If we look back to the initial assessment, you can see that I had, it also had a minor, I mean, a deviation in its minority percentage. It's today, I mean, it's unpopulated situation, it's at 22 percent African-American, 22.36 percent African-American, so it lost a couple of points by adding population, and its Hispanic percentage likewise is affected. And I'm focusing primarily on these two districts because I was trying to solve the voting rights problem first. I got comments from the rest of the council on territories that you wanted to trade, and I have tried to address those in rebalancing the districts, and we'll go into that after public comment and during our drawing sessions. But the basic concern I had was if there isn't any additional African-American and Hispanic population in the level, outside of where the two districts are configured today, there are no concentrations. But in order to maintain the strength of these two districts, I have to find neighborhoods or election precincts that are at least as Hispanic or at least as African-American as the one I'm trying to add it to, or if not, I'm going to have a dilutive effect. Everything I add dilutes these percentages, and it's, from the court's standpoint, that's an important issue. The courts want to see that these percentages are maintained. So the lesson I learned as I was going through it is the two districts have to be balanced with the available African-American and Hispanic population to preserve them. And I realized that they both have a history recently of contested elections between Anglo voters, Anglo candidates, and minority candidates. They're close elections. So this is, their districts are in play, in regular election contests, and so it's important to try to preserve them. So that's why I focus unduly, I hope it's not unduly, but I focus at this point in the presentation on race and ethnicity, because my job was to try to come up with a solution that attempted to utilize that population in a way that preserved both of them. Now, I've gotten substantial comment from the members of the council on those two districts, and I want to visit with the council about those suggestions in executive session, because they raise legal implications. And so my partner Sid Falk and I want to talk about that, because this is not, this is very typical of what we're seeing throughout the state of Texas these days. But these percentages are at this level. I want Josh to put up the voting age percentages here, because they're critical as well for this. Go to the draft plan A voting percentage, voting age populations. Look at the Hispanic one. It's right at 50 percent, 50.67. The African-American number is 8.72. The Anglo is 33.43. It is not quite, or it's very much on the edge of being a majority Hispanic district. In district number two, I'm sorry, my throat's kind of going, I may need some water, just to keep me talking here, hold on a second. Lubbock's a little drier climate than I was used to, excuse me. Okay. So district number two has a 44.2 percent voting age Hispanic and a 20.25 African-American voting age percentage for about a 64, 65 percent voting age majority. I think this preserves both of those as majority districts. You can see that we brought the imbalance, go back to the total pop chart, there you go. You can see that we balanced districts three and six as well. Four and five brought them down to a level that is within the, gets us under 10 percent. The other three districts, four, well, five and six, there we go. Four, five, and six predominantly Anglo. Three at 46.67 percent Anglo is also, you know, has been performing as an Anglo district, and I think will continue to do that. If we look at the chart, please, of the map of Plan A, you can see how in my approach, I brought district two over and across University through the south part of town, and that's going to be an issue on a visit with folks about. We have adjusted population into district six from five. You can see up on the top part of district five that I have brought the boundaries of district six down in, sort of, into the territory of five there to take as much population as we could there. And you'll see that district number one, I think, has taken a small bit of population out of six up on the very, very top of the district, up in the northern area. And unfortunately, the colors between three and one are not real good for distinction on this, they don't show up well on this chart. I'm going to have maybe Josh put up different colors when we go to the actual interactive map, but the boundary of three and one is pretty much identical along the western side of three there. And we've also added population to four by going into the eastern side of district five. And that's how we balance these. I think that the additions into six and four and three from five are consistent with what those council members told me they were interested. They realized that it had to come from the edges of their districts, so I think those are consistent with what you all have told me. Mayor, that's what I have on an initial presentation. I think you all are scheduled to take some public comment. Would you like me to just leave this up while we're hearing from the public and then proceed from there?
I think that would be fine. Before we go to that, just, if you have any questions, if you have any questions, please.
Yes.
I know that you did this, and it's harder for us to find the answer, and having the precincts within, and those numbers, are those better?
I can, I've had clients ask me for a list like that, and what I can do is a really comprehensive list, and it'll have each election precinct in the city. And we'll have a map that has, it'll show what each precinct is with each of the council districts under any plan or under the existing plan, however you want to do it. And we'll have a big map like that so you can see where the election precincts are. And then I create a list, and it has a precinct number, all of these demographics for that one precinct, how many people live in it, what their race and ethnicity is, and I'll also put in how many registered voters are in there, and whether they're Spanish surname or not, whatever details I have from the Secretary of State. So they come out in a table like this for every precinct in the city, and it's very easy for then someone to say, well, if you added precinct 25 to my district, this is the population, this is its ethnicity. I'd be glad to provide that. And we have another session scheduled, Ms. Garza, in a couple of weeks, I think, at the end of the month, the 30th or thereabouts, the 30th. So we could put it up, let's say, later this week, and then the community can look at that and kind of get the, this is to get the brain going on how to solve the problem, and then we can give them that data.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we really kind of want to hear input from citizens. We start by acknowledging that we received two written comments with input to the plan initially planned. The first call, first citizen, if they would make some comments, regardless of whether they're here or not, some of the consultants and the council, I have received, I don't see Josh Roshankis here, we have received Mr. Roshankis. We also received input from Peter Ulbricht, who's here to reject the, it's a how to, I would remind you that we're following our normal citizen comment rules there, just three minutes, and we'll get a warning in 30 seconds. You did put submitted comments, so it's a protection of the people.
Okay. Can you hear him?
Yes. You can read your name and Anderson, direct, please, and Peter comments.
My name is Peter J. Mulberger. I have this still on Homestead Avenue, Lubbock, Texas, 79416, in case you want to send a letter. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to prepare a separate speech, and I was just going to read what I wrote. I'm not sure I can do this in three minutes, but we'll see. We did not have the plan from your consultants to look at, so I don't know for sure whether this plan is better or worse from our perspective than the consultant's plan, but I guess we'll find out in the next few days. I'm submitting a redistricting proposal on behalf of myself and Texas Democratic Women of the South Plains, a Lubbock-based public interest group. This proposal follows the criteria laid out by the city council, including that districts be made up of current city council voting precincts, that city council members remain in the equivalent of their existing districts, all six do in this plan, and that the plan stays close to the existing precincts. The plan is 73 percent population overlap with the existing precincts, which is quite high relative to the sample we do. My criteria for selecting this plan included, A, each racial group as defined in the City of Lubbock's initial assessment letter should receive one reasonably safe majority district for every one-sixth of the population that they constitute, provided that they are distributed geographically in a way that makes this possible, and also provided that they exhibit a distinctive voting pattern, one that would be countermanded by a white majority. Also, B, given their highly unique voting pattern and history of oppression, especially with respect to voting rights, African-Americans should receive extra consideration. Consideration A is about basic fairness. There are six city council members, each presumably representing a sixth of the population, thus for every one-sixth of the population that is made up of underrepresented minorities, that minority should, if possible, be placed in a district in which they have, they are a safe majority. As for consideration B, African-Americans should, to the extent possible, be concentrated in a district or districts in a way that maximizes their potential influence. Currently, the demographic distribution of City of Lubbock, and this is based on City of Lubbock's own data with respect to what counts as a vote increasing, is 48 percent Caucasian, 36 percent Hispanic, 10 percent African-American, and so forth. Thus, by consideration A above, Caucasians should have a safe majority in at best three districts, Hispanics in two, and perhaps a combination of Hispanics in three districts, provided they vote together, which they do. Whether this is viable based on the distribution of these groups remains to be seen, depending on their geographic distribution. And by consideration B, I would hope to concentrate African-Americans in one, maybe two districts. I've generated a million redistricting plans with roughly equal population of these, 458,748 are unique. None of these had more than one Hispanic majority district, and none had more than two Hispanic and African-American majority districts. Considering these limitations, we've identified one plan that meets a variety of visitor data for us, and basically this is two Hispanic plus African-American safe districts, one district with a concentration of African-Americans and of higher actually than the current best concentration, and three districts that are safe majority Caucasian, all with respect to voting age. And the PDF that we sent to city council lists each of the precincts and the district that we would want to assign them to, at least in the second version. The first version I sent, there was some computer problem, but the second one should show that clearly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ulbricht. You're comprehensive, appreciate that. Okay, I'll open the floor for other citizen comments. Anyone else like to comment on the redistricting? Okay, we'll close the citizen comment period. Counsel, we will now go to executive session. City council, hold executive session for today with the purpose of consulting the city staff regarding the pending of how to put the litigation or settlement agreements, and to hold consultations with attorneys under section 551.071 of the Texas government code. It is 9:29, Lubbock City Council's successful executive session.
Good morning. It's 11:09. The Lubbock City Council's returned from executive session. We're going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Mendez to come back up, and he's received, with the feedback that he's received from council, he has a map that I think he calls 1A. David, if you'd provide a little color for that and talk about that, please, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. And I appreciate the council providing me written feedback and to my legal questions. Based on that, I think we've made some refinements here. So Josh, Crayhan is on the, is handling the map that is, the image that's before you here. This is a plan that takes into considerations and comments and advice I got from the council members in districts one and two. As I mentioned earlier, there's voting rights issues associated with the minority populations that comprise both of those districts, and I took special care in trying to address those. We reviewed right before the break into executive session and before the public comment, a Plan A, a draft A that I had distributed to all. I'm going to, I made some minor revisions, well, some substantial revisions to this map. They're kind of subtle and hard to see, so I'm going to ask Josh to go to the bottom part of district number two and three, and then slide the map up a little bit. One of the types of considerations that we had to really focus on is the limited amount of African-American population in the city that's available to add to district two, because if we, we're at risk of diluting its African-American numbers if we do that in a non-discriminating or non-judicious fashion. So the council member helped me in by articulating that, to the extent possible, she was trying to keep the district on the east side of University, generally speaking. It's not quite possible to do all of that with, and still keep it in balance, but you will notice that district, under this revised Plan A that you're seeing right here, district, I'm sorry, at the very bottom of district two, but we've extended district two, and Josh, if you will help me by giving us the boundaries, the north and south areas, generally speaking, where we've extended it. What is that street by your cursor there?
Eighty-second. It's 82nd Street.
Eighty-second, okay. And then we, so we've extended it south along University down to the end of, the edge of the city there, and that's where the current annexations are. Then zoom out again. Yeah. And so the other area that we modified from plan or draft A is over in that little indentation at the north end there between one and two, Josh, in precincts 24 and 25. And so generally speaking, we took population south of 40th Street into, or kept population south of 40th Street. And what are the boundaries on the east and west side of that little section of District two right there, Josh?
That's Gary on the west.
Gary. And then on the east, I think.
Avenue U.
What was that again?
Avenue U. Avenue U.
Q. U. U. I think that's U, isn't it?
That's correct.
U. So we've kept that, and that area adjacent to the park in District two. It's been traditionally in District two. And we took the remainder of precincts twenty-four and twenty-five because of their Hispanic concentration and added and transferred those into District one under this draft. Now, that addition of territory into District one balances District one along with one precinct up at the very top. Let's go look at that one at the very top. Josh of District two, oh, District one.
Way up north, yeah.
So the only other additional territory further up, I think. Oh, where is it? I thought it was over north of campus. Is that, no, that just stays the same, actually. That's, we're still, that's a current bound, is that the current boundary of one?
Yes, that's the current boundary. You make it reference to Northern Park, right through Loop 289, is located?
Yes. Right. And so that is in your territory under this plan. And then, thank you, Councilmember Chodas. And then finally, the place where we kind of had to compromise a little bit, at least under my draft, is down out of precinct number four, District number four. If you'll zoom in on that area that we took from District four and three right there, it does require District two to acquire some territory west of University between, what is the western boundary there, Josh?
Via Memphis Avenue?
No. I think, well, it's what? Memphis. Memphis and down to the expressway. Now, I, this is very preliminary, of course. I just, we had a short discussion with both council members. I dealt with that. I then rebalanced, and I have not had much of a chance to talk with the other council members to see if I got their ideas fully incorporated into the plan. So Mayor, with that overview of the minority districts in mind, if I zoom out and then maybe if you want to go around the table and we can take input and see.
Let's start with Ms. Patterson Harris. Sheila?
Thank you. I was mainly touching because that boundary is not Memphis. It's Elgin.
Elm?
Elgin. E-L-G-I-N.
Oh, okay.
Well, I thought we were talking about District four, though, Sheila.
No, he asked about, he asked what the boundary was for District two.
So again, and like I stress, this is preliminary and we're, I'm going to circulate it to the council to look at. But are there questions, ma'am, from you on the?
I do. I have a whole lot of questions. This is probably going to be, you know, up until the thirtieth for me because, and somewhere in there lies the bell that rings. Could you, can we back out some? Because I'm just, as I look at that, did we ever look at taking that precinct twenty-four and kicking it off to District three?
I think we have. I've explored that in, when I was trying to do it. Do you want to see what that looks like if I just take all of that territory and put it into three of that precinct? Because he can do that.
Yeah, or at least the part that's in District two.
He's going to do it at a whole VTD level right now.
Okay. Cool.
Take the whole VTD and just put that to three. It's going to throw the plan slightly out of balance, I think. But the main thing I would like us to look at is what it does to Districts one and two. And District number one remains on the edge of, you know, it's underpopulated by point four, four point sixty-eight. Your district becomes underpopulated by, at seven point nine percent. You're missing about thirty-three hundred, thirty-four hundred people to get to the ideal size. So you can't afford, or District two cannot afford to lose that much total population and stay within the parameters of the ten percent rule that we're trying to adhere to. And so that, it's too much territory to take out, I mean, unless we add it from somewhere else. And Number one can handle that kind of a loss of population, but I think it also may reduce his minority percentage slightly.
No, fifty-eight. No.
Undo the change, Josh? So he's at fifty-six, thirty-eight. It may actually.
It increased it.
Yeah. So it might be helpful to him, but on a total, so he could handle it. District number one can handle it. It would raise his Hispanic percentage slightly. He'd be underpopulated by about almost five percent. And your district would need a little extra population.
So one more question and then I'll move on and allow somebody else to kind of do what they do. If one kept its portion, that portion of twenty-four that you have in two goes to three? And we pick up from Fortieth South and twenty-five?
Okay. So Josh, the area that we were on, south of Fortieth Street and west of the park into District three. And then the population, the area where the park is and down to Fiftieth Street into District two. No, it's already in two. What do you want to do with that territory?
The eastern, east side of that.
Oh, the east side of that. The east side of that, Josh, from District one.
From forty, yeah, from Fortieth Street.
East of the park in District one, the area in District one.
Yeah, right there. No.
Right there.
Right there.
To the line and down into. So takes your district to twenty point eight-three, takes Hispanic district to fifty-six point oh-four. So I think it's a slight diminution or a diminution in the Hispanic percentages there. I don't know that it added significantly to the black percentage in two.
Okay. For me, if you'll put a pin in it right there and then I'll allow for someone else to go ahead while I mull over this.
We'll bookmark that and then.
Okay, let's bookmark that. Let's go back to your one A, if you would, please, David and Josh. I'll go to Mr. Chodas next and then to Ms. Joy after that.
Yeah. Can you restore where we were, Josh?
No, actually, leave it where it is for right now.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, leave it where it is right now. For reference and for definition, you keep mentioning the ten percent for the public. Would you give us a definition of that?
Sure. The reason that we're redistricting is because you're a legislative body. So like the Congress or the Texas Legislature, you make the laws for the citizens of Lubbock. Because you're elected from single-member districts, then the voter, each voter under the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution is, has a right to have equal representation at the dais. And so one person, one vote. And this has been translated by the courts and the system into the total population of the City of Lubbock, divided among the six districts, is the ideal population size. The courts have said you can't get it perfect. It's practically impossible for a city to work on a mathematically exact population. So they will allow you to have a maximum deviation between the most populous district and the least populous district of ten percent. So if your district is four, five percent overpopulated and some other person's district is five percent underpopulated, that's ten percent deviation. In our situation here, under the initial assessment, the difference between District number five, which is thirty-one point six-five percent overpopulated, and District, Ms. Harris's District number two, which is fourteen percent, fourteen point four-six percent underpopulated, puts us well over that ten percent. So we're at forty-six percent out of balance. The difference between their districts is almost fifty percent, you know. And what means is, in an underpopulated district, a person's overrepresented at council. It takes less people in the district like number two right now to elect a council member than it would technically in District number five. In five, there's so many more people that a candidate would have to get many more votes. And so that's what makes it important for them to be closer in balance so that each voter has an equal voice here at the chamber.
And that's where your deviation factors come in, correct?
Exactly. And so we want to be under ten percent. Now, you don't get a prize for being perfect, but you want to be under ten percent. And for a minority district standpoint, typically in voting rights law, you know, if it's a little underpopulated, well, if that enhances the minority voting rights, then the courts will favor that to some extent. But there's really no requirement that they be.
Okay, on Precinct twenty-five, I'd like to drop that of Fortieth Street, drop it down to Fiftieth and see where those numbers are again.
The rest.
And bring it to District two. I'm sorry, District one.
District one.
Yes, District one.
Yeah. So you got that, Josh?
Yes, and keep the changes that we've already currently done.
Yeah. Yeah, let's just work from where we are right now.
Just the eastern portion of it.
Oh, the eastern side, Josh, from the park on, yeah.
Did it make a difference?
Yeah, fifty-six, thirty-eight. It didn't change it, or did it?
About three tenths?
Undo it, Josh, to see the difference. Yeah, three tenths.
Three tenths? Needless to say, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay. And let's bookmark that as well, Josh, just so we can have, you know, as we're coming back, so we can recollect where we are with the different council members.
But that, that plan, maybe I shouldn't. Is.
Is excessive. Yeah, we'd have to fix it. We'd have to go fix it somewhere else.
So we're looking at Plan B right now? Or reference?
What we had started with my revision and you all have been tweaking it. We can back all those out of there, all the things we've talked about, so you can see where I started this session. Can you back out, Josh, to where, to Plan A revised? There.
There we go. There's Plan A revised at seven point two-six.
Yeah. So this is it, right? Yeah. So this is where we started this afternoon, I mean, this latter session of the council.
No further questions from me, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chodas.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy.
Okay, let's look at District six as affected by District five.
Okay.
Inside of Marshes Sharp, where there's the little coming across.
So Josh, right there where your cursor is, if you'll zoom in on that area right there. And so that little wedge in District five, that to the, on the western edge, on the eastern edge of six, right there, up above the loop, there, that little area, is that a precinct by itself?
Yes, it is. And I believe it is heavily populated. Let me check real quick. Three thousand four hundred and ninety-six people.
Which district do you think we should try to?
Well, there's two. It makes more sense for it to be in District six and/or District three.
Let's put it there. And then you also want that little piece on the bottom?
Yes, I don't know why that was out.
Yeah. So add that to six and then we'll figure out how to. And then the rest, yeah. Is that one on a partial precinct down there, Josh?
I believe so. Yes.
So let's see. So under this scenario, District number six, at forty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-eight people, is about four thousand, five thousand high. We could take population.
Take the wedge-shaped piece and put it in District three and see what happens.
Okay, so the wedge-shaped one into three, then. And again, that causes three to be slightly overpopulated at about twenty-nine hundred. It could stand to lose some additional population. Districts four is underpopulated, it takes some. District, District four is the most likely candidate to take a little bit of that.
Because it borders that anyway.
Yeah, because it borders it. So that, one way to adjust to balance that out would be to trade with four somewhere.
And in terms of the piece that we left in six, it would not have a dramatic effect.
Do you mean that little one on the bottom?
The one we took on the bottom and.
Yeah. I don't know how many people are there, but we're talking several hundred, or is that a thousand down there in the bottom, Josh? He's going to go check.
About three hundred and twenty.
Yeah, so that's not going to be significant. I would like for you to keep this. Mr. Griffith is not here right now, so would want him to take a look at it. And obviously, District four.
Okay, so we can mark this as well as a potential shift or change and then figure out how to, talk to the other council members about how to balance it. Thank you. Any other questions?
The only other, can you scroll down a little bit? Down, I meant up, I guess. Go up some more.
Top of the district, yes.
I just want to be sure that, looks like Precinct one fourteen. Is that the DePaul-McClarty addition? Is that what that is? Or do you know?
I don't have data to that level, so I'd have to rely on other folks here at the city. We can confirm that for you.
What I was trying, I think it is, I just don't want to separate the North Point. What I was trying, I think it is, I just don't want to separate the North Point addition. I want it to stay intact.
Okay.
And I think...
That, what you're referring to, Luttrell, that southern boundary is Erskine?
Right.
The east boundary is North Quaker?
And the south boundary is probably Marshall or something.
The north boundary is Marshall. That's correct.
I think that that's that DePaul-McClarty addition, which is fine. It would be helpful to District, District One, but I just wanted to be sure.
That is a District One.
Is it now in District One?
Yes.
Okay.
It is in one minute.
Okay, perfect. That's where it needs to be.
So is it concerned that it'll be complete in one, in one district?
I don't want to move it. It needs to stay where it is.
Oh, okay.
For sure.
That's really all I have is District Six, other than that, it looks good.
Before we have any other comments or questions, let's just talk real quickly about process. Ms. Garcia, you can weigh in on this too. But we're scheduled again for work session on November 30th, two weeks from today. And that's all we're gonna do that day, right? Becky, as I recall, we don't, that's a special council meeting in the afternoon from two to five, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and we will take citizen comments, I believe, at that time again.
I think, very similar to today. I would imagine you would bring us back some updated plans. Talk a little bit about what you, how you would handle that.
What I'd recommend, Mayor, is, if you all will permit me, and if there's a general sense, maybe we put this revised Plan A up for, that it was discussed at this meeting.
I think we need to, because we've not released anything else. I think we need to do that.
Right. We put this up on the secretary's, city secretary's website, and say, this is the plan that was presented by legal counsel at the meeting, and that was discussed. And I think a person, these meetings are recorded fully and available to the public, so if somebody isn't here today, they can listen to the deliberations as we've gone around the table here, and understand what some of the considerations are in possibly moving it. But we just put this one up, and then when we come back, we'll start there, and you all will have had time to think about this, and give me some further thoughts, and we'll finish it at that time.
I think it makes perfect sense. Ms. Pashner, she had your light on. You good? Do you have another comment?
If we want to stop it, we may want to stop it here with me, because I have a, I just have some, I was looking at that in District One, where it butts up to District Six, in that area, right in the North Point area, or the whatever, I don't know what the name of the area. But it seemed to me it left out some, it cut out some properties. And to me, that didn't, that didn't make sense. 114?
Yeah, can you zoom in on that area in the corner of One up there northwest?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And on the back end of that, there's still some properties there. I just didn't, it didn't make sense to cut them out.
Well, that's...
Because that's just on the north part of that.
On the north, oh, that little section to the north. That just happens to be where the election precinct, what's the election precinct look like there, Josh? See, that's the election precinct, the way it's drawn.
Yeah, I know, but, I mean, I just noticed that in some of the other precincts, we kind of split them as well.
What does the precinct above that look like, Josh? So that precinct, zoom out a bit so they can see it, yeah. So that's the shape of the other precinct. So if we're gonna cut that one up to bring that area in, what's a block structure right in that area, Josh?
Eastern across. That precinct is very Hispanic.
Can you get me a block structure in that area?
Yeah, this is a very large-shaped block right here.
It's one block? Okay, that's what you're telling me. Okay, that's fine. So that is the entire census block. It's either all or nothing in terms of adding that. So how many people are in that block?
812.
What are the demographics of that, Josh? So can, can you read that out to us? Because it's difficult for anybody to see here in the room.
Yes, the total population is the top number, we're at 812. Then the middle number here, the 36, is total African-American, and at the bottom, we have 310 for total Hispanic.
Okay, so it is, you know, 40 percent. It has some minority population, but not, not a majority of the population.
If you were to bring it in, what kind of change would that make? Can we see that?
Sure. Add that block to District One. And let's, before you do, so your Hispanic percentage is at 5638. Hit the button. So it dropped it by three tenths of a point.
It could stay where it is.
I mean, you know, if anything, these kind of moves demonstrate how delicate the statistics are.
And just to share with Mr. Chaddis, this is, the area you're looking at, part of it is the remainder of the North Point pit, which will be developed. And then, as you go north, that is part of the Northwest Passage, which will be developed. Yeah, so I'm not sure that's one that you would want.
Yeah, the development is, the development is understood. Population-wise, it's not. That's what I'm looking at.
Well, I know, and I'm just saying, that's gonna be an extension. They're gonna finish North Point where it is, and then there will be some more. We don't know what the population will be.
My question is, and I know it moves slightly, .3 percent. But it's like you're leaving some folks that could add to District One's numbers on the table. And I know you're saying that that's its own precinct. Well, so are the other two that we were looking at when we're splitting between District One and District Two. You have one precinct that's 24, and the other precinct is 25. And we split that puppy right down the middle on four, well, not all the way down the middle, but down 40. And so that's why I was saying, what would be the difference here in taking in a portion of that? That you, I mean, you're just leaving on the edge of it.
Well, from my standpoint, or just from a legal standpoint, it, if you were doing it to enhance the voting rights potential, or characteristics of District One, that might be a reason to do it. If you are going to diminish or dilute that district by doing, by that addition, then what other compelling municipal purpose is there in adding it that countervails that legal concern? And so, without more knowledge, I mean, I think that's a decision you guys have to make, is that move necessary or not? And does it over, is it more important than diluting the district? And that's the only issue I would raise.
Well, and I'll answer that for you, is that, once you click on Six as a whole, you're getting that whole package of Six, and not just a portion that could be brought into District One. That was my point. I'm not talking about the whole 800 and however many. I was just wanting to see what it looked like if you brought that portion that is directly to the north of that street that there.
Well, I guess, and I didn't make that, the census geography dictates what we can make. The Census Bureau has created that census block with the 800 people in it, based on the information the city provided. I can't go split that block down at the street level and, and take the houses or residences that are adjacent to that one street that you were seeing on that map without violating the census geography. Once we deviate from the federal census geography, we are basically saying, we're not using the census figures. We're gonna come up with our own estimate of how many people live on that street. We're gonna add them to District One for our purposes, but we're not gonna use the census numbers. And that's the base problem we're having, is, this is the geography I get to work with. They're like Legos. They fit together, and I got it, but I can't break the Lego in half to put it in the toy.
Yeah, go back where it shows the neighborhood that borders on Quaker, North Quaker, not...
Is it in that?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah. That is an established neighborhood. And then when you go to, you go down...
South?
South, yeah. Go south. No, go north.
That little...
That is a, an apartment complex. That's what that is, right there. And there's nothing on the rest of that at this point in time.
So you could take the whole census block, this is that big, huge census block we're looking at. So you could take the whole census block, everybody lives right along this, the perimeter of One.
In those apartments.
Right.
That's right.
I mean, and you could add the whole block without, it doesn't really matter to anybody else that you took the whole block. And that's a decision you all can make.
Maybe I'm just confused, I don't know. Maybe. I'll just have to take time and look at, maybe, maybe I'm confused about...
There is no problem with splitting, well, without a city Roxy. There's no problem with splitting election precincts, except that it causes administrative burdens on the people that run your elections. And so those are things to weigh.
Mr. Chaddis? Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm having my, a difficult time bringing in that section referenced in District Six. You know, we're thinking about what's gonna happen in 10 years from now, it's under big development. What are the demographics going to look like in the process? You know, I, right now, I say, let's, leave it where it is, and in 10 years, when the next census comes up, then it will be addressed.
I think it's important that we, I think your point's right. We, we've got to deal with the data we have today. We can't, we're not, our charge is not the future, it's what we have today. And any decisions we make need to be, I think, one, to your point, founded in that.
Yeah, because 310 votes is not a game changer. Not to diminish the fact there's 300 people out there. But I think it's best, like you said, the charge is, let's work with what we have at this moment. And when it gets developed in another 10 years, another seated council...
It's gonna take a lot of...
Well, yeah, you know, it may take 20, but at which point, it'll be addressed.
Well, if I can back us up, it's not, I think everybody's off on a different tangent than what I'm asking is, I'm just trying to understand, as you were trying to explain, how you, how you separate one area down the middle and you don't another. That was my question. And so, I hear you, and I'll figure it out. That was my whole deal, is that we have two areas within, that are adjacent, one and two are adjacent, and we split those puppies down the middle. So that's what I'm trying to understand, how it is that we can do that in one area, and it's not applicable to another. So I, I'll take it in and figure it out. That's my whole concern, is that we do...
Can you do the demographics on just the little portion off of Quaker between Lehigh and the little Jut right there? Yeah?
No, ma'am.
You can't do that.
Because the block, hit the block again, Josh? Highlight that census block.
Not that one, no. No, I'm talking about the one below it.
Inside, inside of District One?
The one that, that one that is in District One now?
Yeah.
Okay? And proposed to remain?
Right.
Can you do the population on there?
Sure. Which area? All of them?
All of it.
All of that area right there, Josh? You want to do it on a, you want it block by block, or like that? Or do you want the election precinct that is comprised of that area?
That's, that's it right there.
Does it, you can see the numbers, but I can't read them from where I am.
1,383 people in this precinct.
And so, it looks to be, I'm just looking, the numbers that are shown for each census block show the total population, the African-American, and then the Hispanic population. They all look to be fairly diverse, right there. If you, I think you're examining them on your computers there. I don't think the public can see it up on that big screen, but you can see the numbers right there, and you can see they're fairly diverse.
And the street just to the west is, what is that street? The Boundary Line?
Boundary Street, Josh?
North Utica, okay. Yeah. Yeah. But it is very diverse.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Mendez. Counsel, before we adjourn our work session, are there other questions? I think we've given Mr. Mendez and his team quite a bit of feedback on some, on some ideas. Anything else that we need to touch on today? Okay, so just as a reminder, we will revisit this again on the 30th of November. We're certainly still open for citizen input on this. The web, that email address is still active for that, and we will convene at that specific time on that day, just for redistricting. Now...
Then that you will put precinct numbers...
Right. The data that was requested earlier, first of all, the, this 1A map, as well as the data around precinct information that we talked about prior to going into executive session, will be made available for citizens.
I will do, and if it's okay with the council, why don't we just post that chart up on the, with the city's secretary's data?
We'll do that.
So anybody wants to see what the election precinct data is, they'll have it all.
That'd be the ideal way to do it, I think. Okay.
Can I ask that the one that I said, we got to put that section in the three that we posted back in as well, or let that be the one that we post? Because I'm very interested in that, by having folks comment.
I can work with that if that's what you all wish to do.
If you want to post a 1A and a 1B, that's fine with us.
We can do that.
If that's okay with you, Ms. Pashner.
I think it just gives people more than one way to look at it. It gives them, as you move things, it gives them opportunity to see if this happens, or whether it's giving you one complete, one option.
I'll confirm with you that before I put it...
Okay.
I'll take my stance until 3:00.
Okay. Mr. Weaver, what's the best way for, do we just, do we go to recess right now until 3:00, is that right?
Yeah, if you're just gonna recess until 3 o'clock.
Okay. We'll, our plans, council, folks in the gallery, citizens watching at home, we'll, we have a regular scheduled work session at 3:00 this evening, followed by council meeting as we conclude work session and executive session. So it's, it is 11:51, Lubbock City Council's recessed.
Good afternoon. Counsel, it's 3:02 PM. We will call, bring the Lubbock City Council back from recess. Still in our work session for the day. Item 1-4 this afternoon is to see, here and see a year-end fiscal finance update and report. Following that, we will, we do have the need for an executive session, and then we expect to begin our council meeting about 4:45 this afternoon. With that said, Mr. Atkinson, I'll let you introduce item 1-4.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Really excited to bring this to you today. Of course, first off, it's the summary of the fiscal year that we just completed. Secondly, and not to try to steal too much of the thunder, it's all good news. So with that, Mr. Kostalich.
Thank you, sir. Yes, it is, especially when it's good news. So we're going to, we're going to jump right into the first one, City of Lubbock Bond Ratings Update. And the big news out of this one is, right in the middle, highlighted in green, our water and wastewater credit, rated annually by Fitch on their, their update, just increased our, our rating by one notch to a double A stable. Very, very good for us as the City of Lubbock, as we have more capital improvement projects coming up, to be able to, to access potentially lower interest rates on that debt because of the higher rate of our, of our paper out there. So as Fitch was doing their, their analysis on our water and wastewater system, they really noted three, three items, and the three reasons for their upgrade. First was a very favorable service area. They see us as a, a very stable community with, with growth and growth potential. So, good for the, the service area as a whole. The affordability issue, they do put that in, and they, they make note of that, because by the calculation, the affordability is the average utility bill for water and wastewater compared to the median household income for the City of Lubbock. That does look high, but they also note in there, they have to, by the calculation, it looks high, but they have to actually take into consideration that Lubbock has a very high student population, so college students, which typically bring down our median household income. So if you, if you kind of factor that in, and take those students out, the affordability index is, is back in range of very normal double A, strong levels. So that, that is one factor that they do note in there. But again, they all, they, they kind of qualify that one. Yes, Mayor?
Remind everyone, Mr. Kostalich, how long we've had the water and wastewater rating, and why we went down this road, what process we've, there's some reasoning why.
Right.
There's a lot of reasons why.
There, there is a lot of reasons why. So the, the system itself is strong enough to, to basically essentially stand on its own. So it is a, it's a utility system that we want to have, where the, the revenues that we get from our, from our rate-paying customers can pay for the system itself. Forever, the water and wastewater, all of the debt was issued with the backing of the City of Lubbock, so it was always based on rates, but it had the backing of our, of our tax, property tax pledge. So you, you kind of get a safety net. It's, it's like Jared always says, it's kind of like the parent co-signing for a car. We didn't need that co-signing anymore. This is a healthy, mature system that should be able to stand on its own.
So therefore, the debt doesn't show up, the new debt your investments were making don't show up on the, on the general fund as debt, they, they're supported solely by this business enterprise, which is water and wastewater, right?
That, that's correct. And anything, anytime you go on to like the Comptroller's website, that, that hosts all of the debt for all of the municipalities and counties across the state of Texas, you're going to see that City of Lubbock has a very high general obligation debt, that's the City of Lubbock debt. That's different for us, because we did issue everything under the, the city's credit. So anything water, wastewater related, that's still backed by tax, it shows up in that. What we're essentially doing is trying to continue to pull that out away, so let that stand on its own.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Kostalich? Please continue, excuse me, Ms. Joy.
I don't know how far you let him get.
Sorry.
I just had a.
I didn't let you go very far.
Well, it's all right. Well, I just wanted.
It's a good slide, don't you think?
I do. It's a great slide. In the second line, it says, "Very low operating cost burden with manageable capital needs." What does that mean? Put that into some context.
That means our, our water and wastewater employees are doing a great job managing their expenses, their operating expenses, they're keeping everything very manageable, very low, in, in terms of running this entire system. And plus, also with all the additions that we've done in the past, going forward, what we show in that five-year capital improvement plan, the five-year CIP, is extremely manageable with what we need. So it's not going to have to require a massive debt influx of debt funds, bond funds, and it's not going to require a sharp increase in rates. It's very manageable.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just excellent comments, and I might add to it, we've been able to achieve this in a relatively short period of time. You know, council established its priorities, most especially the fiscal discipline. Before we went to create this, this rating, that was an item discussed at the council meetings. Through the process of this, each, each time we do this, as Blue has just put a very short excerpt of what we go through and how we're analyzed, but they provide us the benchmarks that we need to hit to continue to moving this rating upwards. And by the council committing to and staying on that path for these last several years, it is already making a difference and paying off. So certainly from a staff standpoint, we very much appreciate it.
Please continue, Mr. Kostalich.
All right. So the, the third and final bullet on there is the, the improving leverage and stable financial margins. That's everything on our end. That's the financial metrics that we talk about, the liquidity ratios, all the, all the real finance kind of technical. Everything that they are doing with our balance sheet and our income statements are showing those improving trends along the way. And as they project out, Fitch also does a financial analytics stress test, called the FAST exam, where they, they really test our revenues, our drought conditions, anything else. So even in the worst-case scenario going forward, they were looking at us as a very, very strong double A credit. So again, that's, that's because of the work by everything that we've done policy-wise and on the operation side. Mayor, I'll pause here before I go to the next, next topic.
All right. But you please continue.
Okay. So the next is the City of Lubbock Sales Tax Update. We have our receipts through the fiscal year end, and we had quite, quite the year for fiscal year '21. We ended up with $82.3 million of sales tax receipts. That was against a budget of $74.8 million, so we were about $7.5 million over budget. We did have a slightly low sales tax projection for fiscal year '21. That was because when we were doing this, remember, we were right in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, didn't really know how fiscal year '21 was going to shape up. And so for the first five months of the year, we were kind of on target. We, we thought, you know, what we had projected out was, was going to hold, and it was going to be relatively close to our budget. But you see in, in March collections, with about 25% over our budget collections that month, and then continuing out for the next seven months, double digits every single month, some is upwards close to 20% over our budget. We just had a, a record-setting year. So, excuse me, very, very, very good results on that. If you compare that $82.3 million to even the fiscal year '20, actual collections of $73, $74 million, you know, you get to about $8.4 million year-over-year gain. So very, very impressive sales tax year for us. So that's $7.5 million that, that was not budgeted. That will essentially drop to our bottom line and be available to use in the next budget as excess reserves. So kind of how we shake out with the, the top 20 cities across Texas that are, that are generally the same as us, we exclude some of those like Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, the, the really large ones. But right, we're, we're sitting right there in the middle, as far as growth year-over-year. So at 13, you know, if you look to the, the middle, you kind of see some of our, our West Texas cities in there. So you see Amarillo at slightly higher, 12.4. You get Abilene at about 9.3% year-over-year growth, but then you do have the middle and Odessa areas that, that did take a little bit of hit on sales tax because of the economy and what's happening with the oil and gas industry. So we don't have September details at this point, so I do have August details, so I can go into those. And really, what we're going to show is, our, our current collections are really the driver of the fiscal year '21 sales tax receipts and, and the way that this has progressed. Three major industries make up our sales tax. Really, the retail is, is our big hitter. If you think of retail, that's going to be all of your department stores, your big, big-box retails, your grocery stores, your big-box grocery stores. That's where retail really, really thrives. So if you look over at the, the right-hand side, those are all the sub-industries within the, the retail industry. And you're going to see clothing, accessories, with a 22, almost 23% year-over-year increase for, for the August collections. General merchandise, also, food and beverage, those are going to be some of your, your big ones. The non-store retailers, those are going to be your online sales towards the bottom, and that increased about 10% year-over-year.
It's amazing, okay.
So very, very good collections. What we see right now, I don't really expect this to, to decrease much. We were kind of concerned with how the inflationary pressure was going to, to affect retail sales, but the October numbers just came out for the US economy as a whole at 1.7 above prior years. So, you know, the, the spending is still there despite the inflationary pressures. So I, I expect that to continue, because even when the US economy was struggling in the retail sector, the Lubbock and the Lubbock economy was still, was still thriving. Next is our food industry, and these are going to be primarily your restaurants, your, your full-service and your limited-service restaurants. And what we have seen right now is a massive increase, our, our limited service, kind of more the, the fast food, fast casual, those restaurants have really stayed stable throughout the fiscal year. It's our full service that has really started to come back and, and starting to peak again, with 11.8% year-over-year growth. And then the third leg of our industry, the, the top three is rounding out, is general services. These are wide gamut of, of different businesses across, so I can't really give you an example of what one would be, especially in the other general services. They're, they're very, very generic businesses, but we're seeing good growth in this as well. Mayor, Council, I'll pause here and take any questions you have on sales tax.
Okay, questions for, or comments for Mr. Kostalich? Ms. Joy.
Mr. Kostalich, the report for, for the month of, is it March? Let's go back to that slide so I can see it, the one. Okay. So we, we're down here, September is when the sales tax was generated. How long do businesses have to tender their payments to the state?
Depends on how big.
They do.
As you said, depends how much they can, they collect.
Okay. So they have to have it to them by the end of October, let's say. If they generated it in September, by the end of October.
In September, you can say essentially October is when the, the business would turn the receipt into the, the comptroller's office, and then the comptroller reconciles, and they have a month to, to disperse those funds back to the, to the taxing entities.
Okay, that was where I was going, is how long does the comptroller have to get it, the money to the cities, and how long do they sit on it?
Another month.
Another month, so.
There's always a two, two-month lag.
Okay, so they have all the money for 30 days, and I guess it draws interest, I would hope?
I would hope.
Mm-hmm.
I would hope that they were doing that.
And then they have 30 days to get it to us.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Massengo.
Oh, no, sorry.
Mr. Griffith?
Is it appropriate to ask a hot tax question?
Sure it is.
Can you give us an update on our collection of Airbnb tax collection? How is that, are, are we still in limbo as far as they're not collecting it for the entire city, correct?
We, excuse me, we are collecting for the entire city.
We, we are, they're not.
No, they are not. No. The, the individual businesses like Airbnb, VRBO, those are not collecting for the City of Lubbock. We have to collect that independently.
But, no. They do pay, Airbnb and et cetera, do pay the state portion directly to the state, do they not?
They do.
So you're talking about the local portion that we have to collect?
The 6% to the state that is, that is statewide goes directly to the state, from, from those carriers, from Airbnb.
And we've attempted to get a setup where all of it goes into the state and they send it back to us, but that's not.
We have. We have tried, we've had those, we've tried to have those communications, but no, we have not been able to get them to, to agree to do that.
Counsel, other, other questions or comments?
Mr. Kostalich, I was looking back, in 2015, 2016, when six of this, six of us were on this dice at, at the end of that fiscal year, that year, the city's sales tax collections The last fiscal year we finished, as you reported to us a few minutes ago, we collected $82.3 million. And we're on track, you know, to, we'll see where the trend goes, but we can just leave it at that. That's a $27 million in, in growth. It's grown nearly 50% in that, in those six fiscal years.
Twenty-seven million.
Yeah. Twenty-seven, grown 27 million on what was a $55 million base. And, and so, I think the reasoning for, to bring that up is that, that sales tax is the biggest piece of our general fund budget. The second biggest piece is property tax.
Correct.
This takes pressure off property tax.
It does, yes.
It allows us to make investments in a growing community. So it's, it's, I think, a very positive kind, kind of number, and I think it's, it's it proves out the investment that businesses have continued to make, whether they're people that have been here, most of them have been here for the long haul, or those that have come to our community to make investments.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Yeah. Ms. Joy?
It also points out the growth in terms of population of the city, and the fact that as we grow, we have more needs. So those people who think that this is just money from heaven, need to understand that there's a, that along with it, we have all these other needs that are generated by the growth that we have, and the good growth that we have. Agree?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Christian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Refresh me, tell me, where was that, 55 million, what year was that?
15, 16. Yeah, the year that ended 16.
Then it leads me to a question of, what year, Mr. Kostalich, maybe a little homework. Tracking the, the years of, as Milwaukee continued to grow, when we first, when it first became a retail hub, for lack of a better term, what year was that that we first started having some retail stores on there, and what it was generating in, in regards to sales tax, to what is, what is generating today? I'd be really curious what kind of, that really became a, a really pot of gold for us, and I think it could be a, a very interesting thing for us to look at, what other opportunities, as we move forward, were other retails, other streets and roads and boulevards that could be the next Milwaukee? I'd just be curious, that, that revenue tracking for Milwaukee.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, we, we won't be able to get that detailed information on Milwaukee specifically, especially that far back when it was being developed. We didn't get detailed reports from the comptroller's office, because you actually have to request that in an open records request, and the city is the only one that can do that. So we, we didn't start doing that until... So we didn't start doing that until 2018, and they can only give you 18 months back.
I think those numbers would be interesting on the West End as well.
And we are, and we can track by geography, by location, but only as far back as we could get the detailed data.
You can't do the screen, but you can track the location.
We can, yes.
All right, anything else for Mr. Kusic? Thank you, Blue. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Agneson. I guess that's all you have for work session, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
No, Council, I don't have any polls for tonight. I'll just pause for a minute, make sure that's accurate. Okay. City Council will hold executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreements and to hold consultation with attorneys under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and finally, to discuss personnel matters under Section 551.074 of that very same Texas Government Code. It's 325. Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. Good afternoon. It's 4:51. Lubbock City Council has returned from executive session. We will continue with our ceremonial items prior to going into our regularly scheduled meeting. We appreciate you being here today. Today is Tuesday, the 16th of November, 2021. This is the second meeting of the, second, it's a regularly scheduled meeting, the second meeting of November for the Lubbock City Council. We'll start this evening, this is our practice, with an invocation followed by the pledges to the American and Texas flags. Tonight, Senior Pastor John Murdoch with the Christian Life Assembly of God will lead us in our prayer. The Mayor Pro Tim will lead us in the pledges. If you please rise. Pastor? Father in heaven, we thank you tonight for your many bountiful blessings. And tonight, Lord, let us not be negligent of thanking you for so many. Thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, tonight. Thank you for the freedom that we have to worship you and to lift your name up. We thank you for this country. We thank you for this great state of Texas, and we thank you for this great city of Lubbock. We thank you for a bountiful cotton crop that you have given us this year and the crops that are coming in right now. We thank you for the prosperity of Lubbock. We thank you for these leaders, Lord, and we look to you tonight to give them wisdom. I ask you to touch Mayor Pope, each council person, the places that they represent. We thank you, Lord, for all of your goodness tonight in this city. We ask that all decisions that are made would be made to continue the blessing that's in Lubbock that we receive on a daily basis. Lord, we thank you for the people of this city. We thank you for the freedom of religion in this city. We thank you for the churches in this city. I thank you for the police force and those who give their lives every day, that they put their lives out to protect us, the firemen and the women and just all the great blessings. Lord, we are a blessed people, and we're thankful for every bountiful blessing that is upon us. During this season of the year, Lord, we will not hesitate to give you thanks for all your goodness. Thank you tonight, Lord, that you're going to touch this place, the people that are here, Lord, and your name will be honored in everything we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of the American and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Pastor, thank you very much. We appreciate your prayer today. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you for leading the pledges. We've got a couple special recognitions this evening. We'll first, Ms. Joy is going to lead both of these. We'll first do a special recognition in support of Home Health and Hospice Month. Latrell?
Who do I have here from home health and hospice today? Why don't you all come on up? And would you briefly introduce yourself and who you're with?
Perry Scott, interim healthcare.
Nicole Cook, interim healthcare.
Amy McAlpin, interim home healthcare.
Leanna Albert, interim healthcare.
Nathan Scherst, interim healthcare.
November is Home Care and Hospice Month, and we're here tonight to present a special The home care and hospice workers provide critical support to Lubbock's aging, disabled, and infirm population, allowing our residents to stay at home while receiving care. We want to express our appreciation to all that you do. I was telling someone earlier, I've been through this three times with hospice in the last month, and I can't imagine what you all do on a daily basis. It's got to be tough, but we really appreciate you for that. So I'm pleased to read and present this recognition to you all. It's a special recognition, whereas home care services provide high-quality and compassionate health care to more than 5 million Americans annually, especially in times of community or personal health care crisis. And whereas 90% of Americans want to age in place and home care is the preferred method of health care delivery among the disabled, elderly, and chronically ill individuals eager to live independent in their own homes. And whereas, home care services allow families to stay together and provide greater health, dignity, and comfort in our communities. And whereas, 2 million everyday heroes, including home care nurses, therapists, and aides, will travel almost a billion miles to tirelessly deliver care to millions of Americans in need of quality health services. And whereas, these dedicated home care professionals and volunteers provide a support network that continues to play a vital role in health care delivery for our nation's disabled, infirm, and aging population. And whereas, it is appropriate to join interim healthcare, the National Association for Home Care and Hospice, and thousands of home care agencies across the United States in recognizing the month of November as National Home Care and Hospice Month. And now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock, hereby proclaim November as Home Care and Hospice Month in Lubbock, Texas, and encourage the support and participation of all citizens in learning more about the value of home care and hospice services for the elderly, disabled, and infirm. Dated the 16th day of November, 2021, signed by Mayor Daniel M. Pope and all the members of the Lubbock City Council. Thank you.
First of all, it's just an honor to be here tonight, but it's also an honor to take care of your loved ones. So interim healthcare and hospice helps the elderly and disabled preserve their dignity and maintain their independence while receiving care in the home or facility setting. Interim healthcare highlights home care and hospice as alternatives to hospitalization and other forms of institutional health care. Home care and hospice professionals help their patients live every day to its fullest, and it's important for their commitment and skill to be recognized and commended. Thank you all very much.
Latrell, thank you for doing that. Next, we have board recognitions. This is that opportunity where we get to recognize citizens who have agreed to serve on our many boards and commissions. Latrell, please take it away.
Okay. We're going to do this tonight individually. We've kind of done it differently, different times, but tonight we have several, and all of our boards are important, every one of them. And the people who are willing to serve on these boards and accept the responsibility to attend the meetings and to participate and to educate themselves, we want you to be individually recognized. The first one tonight is Eddie Harris. Eddie, are you here? Eddie will be serving on the airport board, and the purpose of that board, it's an advisory board responsible for planning, development, construction, and improvement of airport facilities. They recommend improvements and policies to the city council as necessary. That doesn't mean we have to do it, they are advisory, but we very much listen and care about the decisions that this board makes. That's a big operation at the airport, and our airport director's here, too. You want to come on up? This is your newest member. Kelly Campbell is the director of Lubbock International Airport and does a great job. And she, I guess you heard this board, I guess, I don't know. Is that what you call it?
Something like that.
Something like that. Okay, greetings. The members of the city council reposing special trust in the integrity of Eddie Harris hereby appoint to the airport board to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the city of Lubbock in such capacity, confirmed the 16th day of November, 2021, signed by Mayor Pope and all the members of the Lubbock City Council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One side or the other? Scoot over, scoot over. There you go. Honorable mayor?
Thank you.
The next appointment is to the Building Board of Appeals, Alex Cardenas. Alex, are you here? Well, Alex will get a recognition just as Mr. Harris did. That board, by the way, is an officer of city status. It hears appeals regarding the suitability of alternate materials and methods of construction and provides for reasonable interpretation of the construction codes. Members of the board should be qualified by experience and training to pass on matters pertaining to building construction with members representing various areas of the construction industry. A very important board because it is an officer of city status. Citizens Traffic Commission is the next one, Leslie Linderos. Leslie, are you here? These people, you think maybe we're a little early? If they come in, we'll go ahead and do this. The Citizens Traffic Commission, purpose, they study traffic problems in Lubbock, they hear citizen requests and staff recommendations for new traffic control devices and conduct education programs in traffic safety. So if there's anybody here who has an interest in that and might want to follow up with it. Okay, the Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board. We have Robert Bichard. Robert, there you are. Mark Branscombe. Mark, come on up. And Robbie Moon. Very good. The purpose of this advisory board, they review the technical provisions of the national model codes proposed by city staff for adoption and amendment and to forward its recommendations to the city council for final consideration and action. And I will tell you, it takes a long time to get this done, simply because I think right now we're working on the 2018 model codes, because it has to go from national level down to the state and then down to the local jurisdictions to see if we need to make any amendments. So it's not a simple process. It's very complicated, and I know these guys are up to the task to do this. And here we go, Robert Bichard. Thank you. And Mark Branscombe. And Robbie Moon. Thank you very much for agreeing to serve, all of you.
Thank you.
And let's kind of scoot over here. Robbie, come on, and we'll get in here and get a picture.
One, two, three. One, one, please. Okay, thank you.
The next one we have is Planning and Zoning Commission. Brandon Hardaway, are you here? Good, Brandon. This is another officer of city status. This commission advises the city council regarding zone changes and other matters that affect the growth and development of the community and approves Platts. Very important commission. It meets on the first Thursday of each month, and sometimes the meetings are long, Brandon. Has anybody forewarned you?
Yeah.
Good, good. It's very interesting. If you haven't been to a planning and zoning meeting, you might want to go to one, simply because they cover a lot of issues and a lot of interesting issues about the growth and development in the city of Lubbock. So Brandon, your says the same thing everybody else does, except you're on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we look forward to working with you. You'll usually see me sitting out there watching, okay? Congratulations. And next, we have the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission, Deborah Bigness. This is another officer of city status. This commission serves as an advisory committee to the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommends buildings, structures, sites, districts, areas and lands within the city which may be eligible for designation as historic landmarks and historic landmark districts, and reviews applications for rehabilitation, renovation, or expansion of landmark buildings. Composition of the committee is defined by ordinance and requires representation of specific professional groups. I understand you are completing a term and have agreed to serve another term, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. So yours says, much as the others, the members of city council repose special trust in the integrity of Deborah Bigness, and we hereby appoint you to the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission, signed the 16th day of November, 2021, and signed by Mayor Pope and the rest of us. Thank you for agreeing to serve.
My pleasure.
You've got some work to do. And last but not least, we have the Water Board of Appeals, Dennis Karazalis. Hi, Dennis, how are you? Dennis is not a new face around here. We've seen him for a number of years. We've seen him for a number of years when he was here at the city with the Planning and Zoning Department. So we're happy to have you back in a different role now, so.
Very happy to be back.
Good. This is another Officer of City status, and the Water Board of Appeals hears cases to determine the suitability of alternate materials and methods of construction and to provide for reasonable interpretation of the provisions in Section 28-44 of the Code of Ordinances and to determine exceptions to the requirements. The Water Board of Appeals hears requests for variances to the requirements of the Water Use Management Plan Drought and Emergency Contingency Plan as set forth in subsection 28-1b2. The Water Board of Appeals also hears appeals pertaining to cities' computation of Block 1 water rates and customer disputes concerning water bills as set forth in subsection 2861d3. And if you don't know what that means, if you have a problem with your water bill and you can't get it resolved, this board will listen to you. So we appreciate very much the fact, Dennis, that you're willing to serve. And I'm handing you your appointment certificate. You're appointed to the Water Board of Appeals, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Joy. That concludes our ceremonial items for the evening. While Ms. Joy rejoins us on the dais, I'll call our meeting to order. It's 5:11 PM, and the Lubbock City Council is in our regular session. This meeting has been called and posted in the manner required by Texas state law. Our first item on the agenda is number four, citizen comments. We do not have any citizens that have signed up to speak tonight, so we will move to item five minutes. Beginning on page 90 of our agenda book for this evening are three sets of minutes, the September 21st, 2021 Special City Council Meeting at the Transportation Policy Committee, the September 22nd, 2021 Special City Council Meeting at Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, and the October 26th, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting of this Lubbock City Council. Counsel, to begin consideration of these minutes, is there a motion? Move for approval? Thank you, Mr. Griffith for the motion and Mr. Chides for that second. Counsel, are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of approving these minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. We'll now move to the consent agenda. It's item six on our business tonight. The consent agenda items are those considered to be routine and are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the City Council desires to discuss an item, that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Tonight, the consent agenda begins with item 6.1 on page 109. Counsel, let me just confirm, I don't have any polls tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Christian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Got a motion by Mr. Christian, a second by Mr. Massengill, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. All right, let's move to item seven. Item seven is our regular agenda, begins with item 7.1 on page 432. Counsel, items 7.1 through 7.11 are second reading of zone cases. I believe that most of these, maybe with the exception of 7.2, were approved unanimously by this board two, 15 days ago, on the first of November when we last met. If it pleases you, I'll let Mr. Isom run through these very quickly at a high level. Ms. Patterson Harris, looks like she's got to have a question, comment.
I believe that was all but 7.11.
I'm sorry, but say 7.11 again?
You said that all were voted unanimously with the exception of 7.2.
Yes.
I thought it was with the exception of 7.11. I could be misspeaking.
I thought it was different. 7.11 is the property that we, that brought back to us, remember, that we, that changed the, I'll have staff check that for us real quick.
I could be wrong, I was just thinking that, I know that there was a lot of conversation about 7.11, so.
It was the time before, wasn't it? Yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, we'll let Mr. Isom go through them, we'll have a little more clarity. So Brian, if you'll start on 7.1 and run through these at sort of a high level for us, if you would, please, sir.
The ends mixed up.
That's okay, yeah, because we did have a lot of conversation about that one previously, so you're not wrong in that regard. Mr. Isom.
Okay, 1624A is for Sadira Wealth, represented by OJD Engineering LLC. The request is to rezone property from high-density apartment District A2 to reduce single, reduce setback single-family District R1A at 2405 North Avenue Inn. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of Wabash Street and east of North Avenue P. And staff recommended approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and City Council approved first reading by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on item 7.1? Okay, let's go to item 7.2, Zone Case 1927C.
Case 1927C for God Bold Multi-Arts Incorporated, represented by Darcy Akin. The request is to rezone property from local retail District C2, specific use, to commercial District C4, specific use for an event center at 2601 19th Street. Here's the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 19th Street and west of University Avenue. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to two. City Council approved first reading, again, by a vote of five to two.
Okay, anything on 7.2, Counsel? Let's go to item 7.3, Zone Case 2538W, page 472.
Case 2538W is for 806 Land Group LLC, represented by AMD Engineering. The request is to rezone property from single-family District R1 to two-family District R2, generally located south of 4th Street and east of Upland Avenue. Here we show the subject site outline in orange. Staff recommended approval of this request. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to zero with one abstention, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, questions on 7.3? Okay, let's go to 7.4, Zone Case 2538Y, page 493.
Case 2538Y is for Bead Bow Homes, represented by AMD Engineering. The request is to rezone property from transition T and single-family District R1 to two-family District R2 at 7311 34th Street. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 34th Street and west of Upland Avenue. The staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Thank you, Brian. Questions on 7.4, Counsel? Let's move to 7.5, Zone Case 2573S, page 508.
Case 2573S is for North Park Development Incorporated, represented by AMD Engineering. The request is to rezone property from Interstate Highway Commercial District IHC and general retail District C3 to high-density apartment District A2 at 316 and 401 North Winston Avenue. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located west of Winston Avenue and north of Auburn Street. Planning and zoning, our staff recommended approval of the request, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on item 7.5? Okay, let's move to item 7.6, Zone Case 2895Q, page 527.
Case 2895Q is for Bead Bow Homes. The request is for a specific use for an event center on property zone general retail District C3 at 6305 82nd Street and 6303 82nd Street, Suite B. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 82nd Street and east of Milwaukee Avenue. Staff recommended approval of this request, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Counsel, any questions on item 7.6? Let's move to item 7.7, Zone Case 2918B, page 542.
Case 2918B is for Keith McNeese, represented by Seventeen Services Incorporated. The request is to, request is to change zoning from Garden Office District GO to Apartment Medical District AM at 10701 Upland Avenue. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located east of Upland Avenue and north of 109th Street. Staff recommended approval of this request, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on 7.7? Let's go to seven, case, Zone Case, excuse me, item 7.8, Zone Case 2952D, page 555.
Case 2952D is for SPSM Limited. The request is to rezone property from local retail District C2 to general retail District C3 at 601 North Slide Road. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of Erskine Street and west of Slide Road. Staff recommended approval of this request unanimously, it's, sorry, staff recommended approval of this request, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Counsel, questions on item 7.8? Let's go to item 7.9, Zone Case 3031B, page 568.
Case 3031B is for Nestlone Homes, represented by SK Architecture Group. The request is to rezone property from Garden Office District GO to local retail District C2 at 8309 Upland Avenue. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located east of Upland Avenue and south of 82nd Street. Staff recommended approval of this request unanimously. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to one, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Counsel, any questions on item 7.9? Okay, let's go, Brian, let's go to item 7.10, Zone Case 3291A, page 582.
Case 3291A is for John Owens, represented by OJD Engineering. The request is to rezone property from local retail District C2 to family apartment District A1 at 1901 82nd Street. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located east of Avenue U and south of 82nd Street. The staff recommended approval of this request, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved, recommends approval by a vote of six to zero with one abstention, and City Council approved first reading by unanimous vote.
Okay, Counsel, questions on item 7.10? Okay, let's go to item 7.11. It's Zone Case 3432A, begins on page 601. Mr. Isom?
Case 3432A is for Carolyn Lane Musgrave, represented by Duane Lane. The request is for a specific use for an event center on property currently zoned, commercial District C4 and local retail District C2 at 1801 19th Street and 1904 and 1906 Avenue R. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 19th Street and west of Avenue Q. Staff recommends approval of this request, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and City Council approved first reading unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Counsel, questions on 7.11? All right, Brian, don't go far. Counsel, how would you like to consider these items tonight? Is there a suggestion on that? Put them together, we want to pull 7.2 out for separate discussion? Is that okay with that one, Ms. Patterson Harris? Ms. Joy, you give her that?
Yes, I believe Ms. Akin is here. Yeah, she's here.
Good, okay. So I'll open the floor for a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.11, with the exception of 7.2. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Okay, Counsel, we've got a motion to approve items 7.1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. And we've got a second for that motion. Is there discussion or comments? Questions for staff? All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve items, on second read, Zone Case, items, items 7.1, 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, 7.6, 7.7, 7.8, 7.9, 7.10, and 7.11. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, let's go back to Zone Case, it's Zone Case 1927C, it's, it's item 7.2 on our agenda. Is there a motion to begin consideration?
motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is that a second for Mr. Christian? Is that right, Randy? All right, we've got a motion, a second. Ms. Joy. Do you have discussion on this?
I think, Ms. Akin, you want to come on up? Because we had questions about it at the last meeting, and...
Darcy Akin, 2601 19th Street.
And this is not...
Pull that down a little bit.
You had been to planning and zoning several times to try to get this, this done, and there were some questions about what you really are going to do.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cause any confusion when I said I was mostly focused on the food truck. That just meant that that was what I was trying to get ready at that moment, but we have hotel rooms there, we have a theater there, and we have room for at least two restaurants and besides the Cafe Jay's restaurant, and maybe even several other businesses. It's an old hospital, it is very huge.
Well, the, the question that arose is that was your request for a C4, specific use for an event center.
It's for an event center with food trucks and bed and breakfast upstairs.
And so the question was, why were you asking for C4 when you could have an event center in the C3?
Not with the hotel upstairs.
Okay, and I think the hotel was the piece that maybe we didn't, we didn't get.
Yeah, it's like, it's got already 13 boutique rooms there, that, they've been there for years. It's been a, it's been a hotel bed and breakfast since 90, 88, when my godfather got it. When Chrome took over, they turned it to C2, so we're just trying to restore it to what it used to do.
Well, I can see why people are confused, okay? Because of what the request was for, and then the food trucks came along. And, and Mr. Isom, on the food trucks, did they require a C4?
Yes, of course.
I believe they could do.
Don't leave.
Food trucks in C3 as well.
She could have them in both.
But not with the hotel.
But now we're talking about hotel as well.
Yeah, I already mentioned that before.
Okay.
I didn't realize. Okay.
So the, the, let me ask you, the, has it been used as a hotel in years?
Yes. When I lived there in, let's see, I moved there in 96 for tech, and then I worked there until 2006, and it was still running as a hotel when I left. It was until Chrome turned it to C2 that it stopped being used as a hotel. And they did that without my godfather's knowing at all.
Okay, so, so Brian, come back up if you would, please. We may have to have Mr. Zielinski on this. I'm curious as to what has to happen for this to become a hotel again?
I'm really glad that he stayed, because...
Well, a boutique hotel, a little bed and breakfast.
Greg, you come, come up and help us with this a little bit? Because I think this adds a whole nother, I mean, it helps answer the question, but what would, so it's...
So basically, if it was ever permitted as a hotel and had a certificate of occupancy as a hotel, we'd have to research to see if it had ever been, had a certificate of occupancy to be that. The certificate of occupancy doesn't really go away with the use until you change the use. So if the use of it was never changed and the certificate of occupancy is still there, that certificate of occupancy would stay with it.
I still have that.
If you're changing the use of what it is, for example, you have a hotel and you change it into an office building, and then you want to go back to a hotel, that would be a change of occupancy, which would, if you do construction, a certificate of occupancy would be issued off of a building permit. off of a building permit. Otherwise, we would do an investigative inspection where we do life safety checks through our department and the Fire Department's office.
Does the change to event center from hotel affect that certificate of occupancy?
I'd have to research and see what the original certificate of occupancy actually said on it, or go back and look at any permits that were pulled, you know, in that, in that timeframe to see what it actually says on the certificate of occupancy. It's, it's done by the use of what the building is used for. So an event center would fall under an assembly occupancy. A, our occupancy would be the hotel part of it. If there were offices in there, those would be occupancies. So a lot of it depends on what is actually on, on the original CO or any other COs that we could find.
Do you want me to go look it up? I believe I have any...
No.
Bear with us just a minute, please, then. Please continue, Ms. Ryson.
Yeah, assume that the certificate of occupancy covered it as a hotel.
Sure.
Okay? And now we're asked for it to be an event center.
Right.
And what I hear her saying is an event center within the hotel. So that's a different certificate of occupancy.
Not necessarily. It, it all goes back to what it was originally done in the first place.
So what's the assembly? You, you mentioned that...
A lot of times, if, for example, take the, the last one you had, 7-11. So that is an assembly occupancy because you assemble people inside that building and it has no other use. So a lot of times, for examples, the Overton Hotel, it is, the certificate of occupancy is a hotel, but it has assembly occupancies in it. Wasn't necessarily giving a CO for the assembly part of it. It was given a CO for the hotel with the assembly, with the event centers and conference rooms and offices in it.
So the number of people allowed in the facility, whether the hotel and/or event center, is regulated? Is that correct?
It's regulated off of, off of the, in the building code, and the number of occupants determines what type of assembly occupancy it would be. And it's also regulated through fire codes.
Okay. As I understand it, the portion where that was changed to C2, what was the name of the?
Chrome.
Chrome, where Chrome was. Mr. Ryson, was that, is that part of the building? It's part of this request, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm having a hard time understanding how Chrome could change from a C4 to a C2 without the owner's approval.
I'd have to go back and look at the case. I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
Well, she just said it was changed without the owner's approval, so...
Or knowledge.
I'm having a little, little trouble with that, so, okay. So how do we know, Mr. Zalinski, how many people can be in this facility? Maximum? What's the maximum?
I, to be honest, I couldn't tell you. It's all, but it's not going to tell you an occupant, or the occupant load of a building on the certificate of occupancy. On, basically, what we'd have to do is go back and find the plans for the building and see what was constructed, if anything has been constructed after that. If anything's been constructed after that, then it would, it could trigger a change of occupancy. It's hard to tell without looking at plans and seeing how the building is laid out and what the different uses in the building are.
But I, I, I think the confusion is because we've started out with one request for food trucks, and then we've, food trucks and event center, and now we're talking about reusing it as a hotel. And I think that's kind of where we, we've had a little bit of questions, so.
Okay, let's go, Ms. Passionhears next, then Mr. Griffiths.
Ms. Aiken, as a part of your request, there've been quite a few residents in opposition to your request. Are you, were you aware of that?
Yes, I was aware of that. Most of them, I thought, was just this one renter guy who owned a lot of the houses behind the place. He thought that there would be more people, but he's owned the place for over 20 years. He didn't ever complain whenever it was the Godbold and we were having events there back in the 90s.
Sounds like there's going to be a whole lot going on now, if you allow me, so, to me. Sounds like there's going to be a lot going on, and my concern is whether or not you've reached out to not only, if it's the gentleman that owns all the properties, or even those folks that he rents to, to have a conversation with them to see what their concern is.
Well, the college students who rent from him have no concern at all. Most of the time, they use our parking lot to just park in anyway, or dump their extra trash. If anything, we've had a bit of a problem with them.
But my question is, have you visited with them or the owner to see what the, when did you visit with them last?
After the last two zoning meetings, and he told me if it was over just on the 2601 side, not the parking lot behind, that he wouldn't be opposed, so I'm confused as to why he held the opposition. Remember, in the very beginning, they thought that they didn't have it separated between the Chrome side and Cafe, and the Cafe J's side, but now they have it separated for the zoning meeting. And the building has room for office space and stuff like that. I, I mean, it's huge. It really is. It was a hospital, if it gives you any idea of how huge the building is. At one point in time, it had three different restaurants, a hotel, and a theater in it, going all. And that was in the 90s. I don't see it being any more busy than that. We had it busy every weekend.
Ms. Passionhears, do you have further questions right now?
Oh, I thought you'd turn me off. I couldn't see the red. No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the property, as stated by Ms. Aiken, was originally a hospital. The property was redeveloped as a hotel, as she stated. I think that the occupancy will be determined by Mr. Zalinski. If this gets approved, staff will be able to determine the occupancy. I don't think that's a factor as to how many folks you'll be able to allow in the building.
Right.
And so I think that, that's a future consideration and will be determined by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffiths. Other questions, Ms. Aiken? Ms. Aiken, is, is the property still being marketed right now to be sold?
Yes, it is, and if the person can continue to do something with the building and rent it out where it's profitable and not just retail, then he'll continue to do something there with that building.
Let me, let me, let me ask that.
He's not going to tear it down if he can continue to be profitable with the building, but as now with the C2, it is not profitable for him to take over, being that most sales are online. Retail is not very big these days. In order for the building to be successful, it would need to be turned back into an event center hotel.
So I think what I heard you say is there's a chance to sell it if, in fact, the C4 zoning goes through. Is that correct?
Oh, it's sell, selling either way. It's a chance to not demolish the building and have it rezoned as something completely different. It's a, it's a historical, it could become a historical building if that were the case, if it could be considered to be profitable, if he could do something with the building other than retail.
Okay, Counsel, other questions on this? Okay, thank you, Ms. Aiken. Appreciate it. Discussion, Counsel? Questions for, for staff?
I guess what I just heard was the building was going to be sold either way, whether we change the zoning or don't change the zoning.
Right.
Well, that's what Ms. Aiken said.
That's what, yeah. It's going to be sold either way. It's just the difference between whether he keeps the building or tears it down when he buys it.
Who is he?
Um, Gary somebody, I can't remember his last name, Hardworker?
Well, there's not, I, I don't know of any reason, Mr. Ryson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know of any reason why, even if we didn't change the zoning and it sold, why the new owner couldn't come to us with a zone change.
It might not sell, I don't know, but it could.
The question's not for you, Ms. Aiken, it's for staff. Mr. Ryson?
They could. Generally, in most transactions, when we see it, they want to get the zoning ahead of the purchase. The zoning that they're looking for, they usually go into contract. If they don't get the zoning, then they typically won't buy the property. Is generally how that works. But again, he could purchase it and then come in for zoning.
Well, I haven't heard there is a contract.
No, I haven't heard anything either.
There's not. Truly not from anything to do with our decision, anyway. Yes, Ms. Aiken, please come back up.
Well, there is a contract. It hasn't been signed yet, and I'm not sure whether or not, I mean, what I've been told is probably going to go through, but if it doesn't go through and I wind up managing the building, I would like to be able to do food trucks and a hotel and an event center.
So I heard you say there's a contract, but it's not been signed. So there's been discussions about?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's a little, that's different than a contract. It's very different. Yeah. Mr. Christian?
I'm even more confused now than I was before she made that statement just then. I would like to ask this young lady a question, that if it sells, do you have any idea what the future owner might do with this building?
I believe he is going to do an event center and have hotels, rooms upstairs, and maybe some office spaces, and possibly a couple of restaurants.
So I'm not sure why we should approve this zoning case until...
Because if it doesn't go through and I wind up having to...
If you think that there's one on the, a deal on the table, I don't know why we're even talking about it right now.
Well, I started this back before there was a deal on the table, and as something that I was doing, is running this building myself. And now that there is a deal on the table, if it doesn't go through, I would not want to have to start all of this over again.
That's, well, yeah, very confusing.
Well, but I do think, Randy, that what I heard, I think, Brian, this is right, she's got to get this zoning to go back to use it as a hotel, correct? So that's, regardless of the sale contract, if the, if the, there's, you know, so, because since it was changed, they're having to restore that, so the sale's probably, it's not, it's not signed, it's, it's just a discussion at the moment. Yeah. Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. Here's the way I see this. First of all, the sale is, in my mind, is not germane to the conversation, neither is the occupancy of the building. Is it compatible? Is it, is that, is C4 a compatible use for the location where it's at? Remember, it's next door to C4 already, and you had two adjacent commercial property owners that didn't oppose the case. And I think those are the things that are germane to our consideration for this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Ms. Joy?
Am I correct, Mr. Ryson, that the only part that is C2 is where Chrome was located, which was the wing off of the hospital?
I'd have to go back and look at the map. Again, I don't have that as part of this slide show.
Well, I guess my question is, what's the current zoning on the hotel?
There's, I know, I believe there's a portion of the property, and let me get back in here, that's C2 and a portion that's C4.
Going real fast there.
So there, I believe overall, there was a C2 and a C4, and she's just going back and rezoning the portion that was C2.
Say again?
There was a portion of the overall property that was C4, like a small portion, and the remainder was rezoned to C2 at some point. I'm not sure when.
Including where the hotel was...
I believe so.
Is located, okay.
And now she's coming back in to take that piece back to what she says it was previously.
Mayor and Counsel, if it would be helpful, page 459 of your packet shows the zoning. Roughly the west third of the property is C4. The eastern two-thirds currently is C2 specific use. Page 452's got the zoning history on it. It was changed to C2, I believe, in 1993?
Yes.
Yeah. At the request of Mr. Godbold.
Oh.
We have, we have the minutes.
Then again, in 2009, there was action taken to do even a further change.
Yes, sir. Page 458 with the area on it, you can kind of see what, which one of the buildings is C4 and the two that are currently the C2.
Right.
And the parking lots that front 18th Street is also C4?
Commercial, yes, yeah. So it looks to me like, based on that map. Which would make sense, because you've got parking lots on...
Right.
Both sides of it that are, that are, one's multifamily and one's, well, it's a hotel, it's zoned apartment, medical, I don't know, you know, whatever the, whatever that zoning is specifically.
All right, Counsel, other questions on this? Ms. Passionhears?
So Mr. Gold, Godbold, he is, remind me again?
He's my godfather, and he's the owner of the building.
Okay. So he's indicating that the, for the change, it's needed to add previous uses?
Yes.
Staff living quarters?
They said that there could not be staff living quarters under the new C4. He wanted staff living quarters, as, he wanted everything the way it used to be, and he's told me he didn't know, so I'm assuming Chrome said, oh, do this, and he's like, yeah, yeah, go ahead, do whatever, and he wasn't really paying attention. That's his fault. But, what, sorry, did I answer your question?
I got it. Thank you.
Okay, any, anything else from Ms. Aiken? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Counsel, further discussion? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve item 7-2 on second reading. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by that, same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries five to two. Okay. Counsel, let's go now to item 7-12. It's on page 614. This is a, an...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move to this last item, the lanes are still here, and we just approved your zone change. I didn't know if y'all knew that or not, but before they leave, I did want to express appreciation for the fact that they did it right. They found out they couldn't do what they wanted to do. They waited. We got our ordinance in place for an event center. They came back and asked for the change, and it's been approved now on second reading. So you guys don't have to come back anymore unless you have something new, but I did want to...
want to express my appreciation of the fact that you tried to get it right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joy. We'll now go to item 712. Item 712 is on page 614. Ms. McCacken?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just a quick reminder, at the end of October, you approved a resolution to establish the Willow Bend Villas Public Improvement District. The next step in this creation process is to adopt a resolution tonight, which will establish the classification and assessment method for this property, and then also call the public hearing, which we are proposing to call for December 7th at 5:00 PM. And a reminder of the location, Willow Bend Villas PID is on the south side of 19th Street, just west of Endler. It's kind of an extension of the Willow Bend neighborhood that's on the north side of 19th.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McCacken.
Thank you.
Let's get a motion and a second on this one, and we'll have further discussion. Is there a motion to consider this?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Chitas. Okay, questions on this one for, for staff? Ms. Joy?
McCracken, this, this PID does not include the original...
Correct.
Willow Bend.
Correct.
Because they had a PID at one time, and they decided they didn't want it anymore, so this is, does not include that.
This is only the property on the south, the newly developed property.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Nice clarification. Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. McCacken. Counsel, area of motion on the floor to approve item 712, which would approve the method of assessment for the Willow Bend Villas Public Improvement District, and set a public hearing for our next regular scheduled meeting, which will be December 7th, 2021. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that, same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. I believe that takes care of our business. Ms. Garza?
Yes, sir, it does.
Weaver? Okay. Counsel, thank you for your, for your attention today. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. I would open the floor for a motion to consider adjourning. It's a motion from Mr. Chitas and a second from Mr. Massey Gill here. This, this meeting is adjourned.